Mr. Raminsky.
Here.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Voe?
Ms. Wakus?
Present.
Mr. McGinnland?
Present.
Ten of eleven present.
Mr. Voe is on the telephone. He's out of town on business, but he is calling in for me. First meeting, public meeting this evening is for the proposed ordinance to amend the 2018 budget, which will allow for transfer of monies from the reserve fund to pay for the poll books, the tri- poll books. We have several people have indicated an interest in speaking in that regard. Mr. Olah. Yeah. Because of the program out in the rotunda, we don't have the podium at the current time, but the microphone is available at the table there. If you would use that, we appreciate it.
Hate to be redundant for those of you who were in the previous meeting. Governor Wolf got on what we call the bully pulpit this week and last week, giving what we call in business the greasing of the skids with regard to a couple decades' worth of millions of dollars of spending for election hardware, software. Ironic that we seem to be in a big hurry to spend capital money here, which is hardware and software, and I'm not going to differentiate one piece of hardware or software from another. But to spend money right now to buy poll books or anything else regarding the election process at this time without putting pressure on the governor to cough up some money to pay for his dream and let us hang in for it without any representation, I think would be foolish. I believe that we should at least hold off until the November election and see who wins the gubernatorial race and then decide... Well, a couple of things will happen in that intervening period. One is technology will have changed and some of the smoke will have cleared. Does what we want to do right now really fit with the governor's demands? And so I think we're losing, if at the minimum, by doing something right now, we're losing leverage. And if you don't understand what I mean by financial leverage, see me after the meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Olah is the only one to indicate they want to speak at the first hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience currently? Mr. Gastis.
So they want money from the reserve. Was this in the budget, precisely in the budget and accounted for at that time, or is this a new endeavor relative to the reserve money? Now, it seems to me that the amount of people voting is not very high percentage-wise, okay? You vote every two years, correct? Are those machines serviced properly that we have and are they functioning properly? Or what is the dilemma with these particular machines, all right? And this, in other words, you've got a reserve of $4 million. Everybody now eyes that, all right? How much of that reserve can I get to do whatever my special projects are, all right? You're not going to have a reserve pretty soon, all right? Because everybody wants dibbies on it, okay? If the percentage of people has been reduced relative to the number of voters and appalling places, all right, what is the necessity to spend this kind of money? All the monies that you have in excess eventually should be applied to what? Any of you know? Substantial debt is what it should be applied to. Get the debt straightened out, then specifically budget and allow certain revenues to be allocated to expenses that are necessary, not pie-in-the-sky ideas or what they think they need, all right? Now, there's another ones coming up, slightly related to this. There's another $100,000 that a particular group of people want for certain circumstances. We can get into that. But why are you going to allow this to happen? Each time somebody comes up here, they want to spend your money. They see that reserve. I've seen reserves before. This is not new. And everybody thinks they can get their hands on it, all right? It started the last meeting with the other aspect, with the manager, okay? And you've got to stop it somewhere, all right? Somewhere you've got to say no, all right? Address the debt problem specifically, and you might come out ahead eventually. Not this year, maybe not next year, but eventually you will, okay? That's basically what I have on this. Half the people don't vote anymore. They talk a good game, but they don't go to the polls. I go to the polls, I vote. I haven't had any problem with any of the machines, all right? I know how to punch the bing, ging, bing, bing, right? I know you do, all right? You all vote because that's your what? That's how you get elected. But eventually, we're going to get rid of that problem, all right? We're going to get independent thinkers and independent doers because the way the voting goes with this and other things. I've got a list there on this side and then there's this side, and who's going to vote for what? We already know whose votes, how you vote, okay? That's all.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakus? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Absolutely. We got your file. It's pretty thick, too. Okay, we're going to begin the second hearing. We've already had the pledge and the mother of silence in prior hearings, so we will move on to roll call, please.
Mr. Raminsky?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Ms. Wakus?
Present.
And Mr. McGinnland?
Present.
Ten of eleven?
Thank you. The public hearing is on the proposed ordinance for implementation of the fee for local use provided by the legislature allowing a county to impose a county fee of $5 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within its boundaries. We have several people have indicated an interest about speaking this evening. Mr. Kokas, please. Coaches, thank you.
Okay, in my 79 years of living here in the United States, I'll be jumping around here, but government can do anything it wants to, anytime it wants to, to anybody it wants to, and it has. Just look at the Kids for Cash Program. Now, you want to raise this fee or vote on it. I signed up for the water bill from my house to the line. It was $4. Now it's $8.50. The sewer protection sends you a letter, they want you to sign up for sewer protection. That's like another $15. UGI notifies you that the line you owe is not yours, and that's going to be another $15 if something breaks. Now, I like to say it's a dyke tax. That went up 30%. When Mr. Long was the county manager, he told me this would be eliminated in a year, and I know the dyke board is separate from this unit. If the government had an opportunity to sell shoes, they'd sell the right shoe for $29.95 and the left for half price. Now, I know you all didn't go out and personally dig up the streets so you can pass this $5 registration fee on those of that own cars. What will it be next year? 10? I have no control over how you will vote. Let your conscience be your guide. But remember this, government can do anything it wants to, to anybody it wants to, anytime it wants to, and that's what you will do.
How doin', ladies and gentlemen? I was here last month, and I couldn't help but to hear one of the people in the audience say that they elected people on the board and they were supposed to help the seniors and that, and they're voting the different ways now. It's a shame that they turn on their own people that puts them in there. Today's paper alone, gas from last year went up 46 cents a gallon. It's right here from the Times Leader today. Oil's $70 a barrel. London, it's $76 a barrel. Doesn't this tell you people that we have a problem on our hands, and yet you guys want to hit us with another fee? It's a shame, you know, that nobody wants to listen to the people, you know? And this place should be... I said I was going to go and get people here for this meeting, but I just said it's a waste of time because you guys ain't listening to the people, you know? There's serious problems out there, and you just want to put another tax on, you know? I don't know what to do, you know? It's like, in one month, it went up 15 cents a gallon. What does that tell you? We have a problem on our hands, and now you want to put another $5 registration fee. The gentleman over there in the corner said, "Next year, if the state don't give us reimbursement, like the money from next year, we'll both get rid of it." But, I mean, in the meantime, you know, what you do with the money, I guess there was money appropriated every year for road and bridge. Is there any money being spent on roads and bridges? Because from what I see on the county roads, they're deplorable, you know? Is there any budget for road and bridge, like the roads in the county?
If you look at the budget, there is a budget for road and bridges, Mr. McCabe.
But I mean, it's like I was just thinking to Ms. Jane there about the Water Street Bridge. I said, "I wouldn't be here if I didn't see a problem on my hands." It's a concrete bridge. For the last couple of years, they've been putting blacktop in there and pops right out. Same thing with the ramps on the county. If the county did it or the state did it, put cement in, a concrete bridge, they wouldn't have this problem. They put blacktop in, it pops right out. They're talking shutting the bridges down or the ramps for a year or two. There's no reason for it if they come in and put cement in like they're supposed to, but they just want to spend the money, and it's not right, you know? So at this time, I wish the people would sit down and listen to the people and, you know, vote with your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back to the same old issue that was promoted about two years ago, remember? Questions I have relative to this $5 fee is, it's a one-year thing, okay? Who determines the eligibility list or non-eligibility list? Who determined that and who is it, all right? I haven't seen anything in writing yet, specifically for those persons that are exempt, all right? For the fee, okay? The other question is, what has been surveyed relative to what precisely roads will be fixed and what bridges will be fixed? Where are they? What are they? What's the extent of it, of the damage, or if there isn't any damage, whatever minor repairs have to be construed, okay? Where's the priorities, all right? Is this another dream that goes on? You know, you can also, as you picked this up in the depression, relative to taking it from municipalities, there's also some loophole or method that you can put it back on the municipalities' backs and let them handle it, all right? Now, most of the boroughs or townships and municipalities take care of their own streets. They aren't county streets and they aren't state streets. Kingston does a good job. 44th started to do a better job, all right? Certain other areas have done well, all right? The county, I don't know where they got their talents from relative to fixing roads. I laid concrete years ago on big highways, all right? What they do is throw a patch down, and the patch they throw down is worse than what it was before, all right? Somewhere along the line, you've got to get that straightened out. But I like to know, again, who's exempt from this? I want to know the specifics of that arrangement, all right? And who? Because these $5 taxes, people are getting fed up with the nickel and diming it, all right? You spend $5 more on a lot of other things, maybe a hamburger for that matter. Hamburgers are not cheap anymore either. But somewhere, this got to be handled properly, all right? I don't know who is responsible for it totally. I know the manager here a little bit, but something's got to be done. I know how you're going to vote. I wasn't kidding you the last time I spoke. There's how the votes are going to be, all right? There's one side and there's the other side, the exact names. You know, it's gotten pretty ridiculous of the way this thing goes, you know? We got a problem in Washington, we got a problem with Zern County, okay? Somewhere, somehow, you better get a meeting at the mines, get these problems resolved.
Mr. Urban?
Good evening, counsel. Stephen J. Urban, Wilkes-Barre. As I look at actually the last, all right, checking account balances from March 31st, it shows that the county already has $3.5 million sitting in the bank for various bridge accounts, aid systems, the roads and bridges, Act 13 Bridge Fund, Act 89 Bridge Fund. It's $3.5 million that you failed to already utilize as counsel. So I think you really need to utilize that money before you go and tax the people another $5 and keep taking money that, while you have money sitting in the bank, that's really doing nothing at this point in time. You know, it's a shame that, once again, you know, you seem to need a math lesson that every $5 that you take is basically a minimum wage person, takes them about one hour's worth of work to make that $5. So if it's two cars, it's about two hours additional work that that person has to go out and earn because, you know, you pay all these fees and taxes with money that's on your net income, not your gross. You know, so you're asking the public to go out and work, at least, you know, the least that can afford it, to go work another hour or two hours, possibly three if they have three cars. You know, it's a shame that you've got to keep nickel and diming people to death. Why don't some of the people within the county that are employed here give up some of their raises? You know, I think years of mismanagement in this county have cost this county millions of dollars, which could be used for roads and bridges, could be used for many other functions. Why don't you have the grant writer go out and look for federal grants before you go and tax the people? I'm sure there's other programs out there besides having to slap on another $5 for a registration fee. Currently, there are about 21 counties that actually do participate, you know, in this particular $5 fee. One county actually repealed it, which was Fulton County, back in 2015. I think you shouldn't even bring it up, I mean, because it really just hurts the people, especially the ones that can least afford it. And it doesn't, really, the exemptions aren't clearly defined. Not everybody's going to be paying it. It's just going to be basically going on residents. Certain fleet vehicles aren't going to have to pay for it. Probably municipalities aren't going to have to pay for it, so police cars, things like that, definitely that are registered, aren't going to have to pay for it. So once again, you know, you want to shoulder the burden on the taxpayers, and some of you who, you know, ran campaigns, and I do have to echo the sentiments of certain people out in the public, that ran on a campaign for the taxpayer are doing completely opposite at this point in time.
This is going to be one of the few times in either your or my lifetimes when you're going to hear me say that the money is secondary, even though we all know better. Funding for roads and bridges and transportation has largely not a damn thing to do in Pennsylvania, specifically Northeast Pennsylvania, with the conditions of the roads. Let's not kid ourselves. If I put my engineer hat on, and I've been trained by a bunch of world-famous guys, luckily for me, over 80% of every pothole that you see and run over and bent your tires on in the last six months were preventable and precludeable. I stake my life on it. I know better. Did you hear me? They're preventable and precludeable. Why are our roads the way they are versus out in Northern civilization? They know what they are doing with materials and application, and we purposely do not. As an example, does anybody know which month of the year do highways that are still in one piece, which month of the year do they do most of their work? Anybody know? Any engineers here? It's September, not April, not May, not June, September. Why? Why don't they have potholes? You've heard numerous people who travel all over the Northeast with much more heat cycle than we have and much more weather than we have, and their roads are fine because they do preventive maintenance in September. We purposely do a crappy job, if at all, and this goes to state, county, and fiefdom. They all do the same thing. A former Wilkes-Barre mayor taught everybody very well, "Let's hold off, let's let the potholes grow. That way, we can get capital money from Harrisburg in three years, and we won't have to raise our taxes and expense." That's the deal, folks. I have a question for next meeting, an action item, old business. Who was the contractor who put in the county roads in Hanover Industrial Park? Before we spend a dollar or collect a dollar, somebody should sue the G C of that project because those roads... You don't have to do a course sample. The application of those roads were a joke. By putting more money on the project through taxes or otherwise is fruitless until we start getting some control over the construction and maintenance of our roads. What does more progressive states do, how they get their money? They apply the tax rate on how much each vehicle wears on the roads. For example, some states do the following, which would be contrary to what we're proposing here. Yeah, real quick.
Could you finish your thought?
Yeah. What they do is they know that bigger loads wear out the roads faster. So they, in their registration... So they, in their registrations, they tax on a graduated scale based on weight and axles. What we're doing here is we're excluding the very vehicles that are wearing out the roads the most. Just think of, remember the statistic that's 52% of all the load on Interstate 80, just as an example, is from out-of-staters. Are we collecting any of that money? No. Thank you.
Anyone else, those are the names that had been submitted. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to that? Want to come forward, please? We need your name, please, and your residence.
My name's John Petroskis, and I urgently urge council to vote no against this regressive owner's tax on the working poor. Our neighbors in Lackawanna County voted it down. The commissioners declined it. You now make us non-competitive if I had a business bringing trucks or vehicles here into Luzerne County when I can go to Lackawanna County a few miles away and not pay your tax. I have another solution for you, since your roads are crumbling and you haven't been able to do it, like you did to us poor old folk in the floodplain. You create a road commission, and people who have county roads, you can assess them $60 a car like you're doing me a levy fee. Kingston Borough has no county roads. So like you don't want to support my levy, I don't want to support your county roads if you live out in the hills. Furthermore, more population has moved outward. So a lot of these roads, the county assumed back in the early 1900s, I think, should be turned back over to these townships. Look at Yalick Farm off 309, if anyone's used to Harvey's Lake area. What used to be Yalick Farms, no more corn grows there. Apartments, condos, single homes, you have an economy you can tax out there, or they can tax themselves if they live in Lehman Township or whatever, to take care of their roads. This should not be a county responsibility. I really advise a county to dump it back off to these communities that own the roads because they have the population to deal with it. Look at your census report. It'll show you the map of the migration of people added to floodplain into areas of higher ground, and that's where a lot of your county roads and bridges are failing. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else, please? Did you fill out a slip?
No, I didn't.
Have your name and residence, please.
My name is George Gendry. I'm from Dupont, PA.
George, what was your last name again?
Gendry, J-E-N-D-R-E-Y.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When PennDOT did the project in Dupont on 315 where they repaired the bridges there, they worked on it for two years, they repaired the on-ramps, off-ramps around it. Right next to it, it's a PennDOT shed. I don't know how the people don't see the condition of the road. That road is not a year old, and it's already buckling and tore up. So you're getting into bed with PennDOT. PennDOT is the most, one of the most irresponsible departments we have in Pennsylvania. I can't believe how they operate. They rape the turnpike. The turnpike was supposed to be free after it was paid for. Right now, that just turned into a slush fund for PennDOT. And the money that they're waiving in front of this council, from my understanding, it's a one-year, one-project match. Am I correct on that?
That's what they've guaranteed, one year, you're correct.
All right, so then that goes away, and the money they're giving is our own tax money out of the general fund anyway. So we're all, we're coming with hat in hand, begging for our own money for our county roads. At the meantime, people in the back mountain are screaming, they don't want these roundabouts. So the money they blew on the roundabout on the South Cross Valley and the money they blew on the Five Points one, you probably could have paid every county road that you had here with the $60 million on the South Cross Valley and however many millions are blown now, and nobody wants that. So maybe what the council should do is get together with some of the representatives, senators, and find out what is wrong with PennDOT and not get into this deal with PennDOT. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Segment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. We're going to move right into the voting session. We'll begin with the pledge of flag, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice of all.
Moment of silence, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Braminski.
Here.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Kelleher.
There.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Ms. Wakus.
Present.
Mr. McGinley.
Present.
Everyone present and turning on the phone?
We have two people who are on the phone this evening. Mr. Urban is out of town, and Mr. Bo is out of town on business, but they will be participating by phone. We have no recognitions or certifying proclamations this evening. Do we have any additions or deletions from the voting agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Kelleher, this segment, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Public comment? Mr. Scheider?
You're considering a $5 vehicle registration fee on the residents of this county. I was looking over some different documents, and this council is responsible for giving out grants for the leftover Marcella shale money. So approximately $71,000 was available last year. You decided to divide it out over 16 people, giving each applicant $4,423.86. And to get that little bit of money, you made them submit a plan, a plan to get $4,000. But yet now you want $1.4 million from the people of this county, and you don't have a plan. You just want to dump it in a pot for road and bridge. Well, road and bridge gets approximately $8 million from various sources. Now you want to give them an additional 1.4, and you're all jumping at it because the state wants to give some matching money. But again, where's your plan? Was a plan presented to you by the manager? No. Did you ask for one? No. Why not? To give someone $4,000, you want a plan, and if they're not going to keep the plan, you're not getting given their $4,000, and you've made that quite clear at previous meetings. But yet you want 1.4 million from us, and there's no plan. How about you do a plan that says, we will do the repair on the roads and the bridges to any community that wants it done if they're willing to take ownership once it's done? That's a plan, because eventually that puts us out of the road and bridge business. How about asking the communities and the businesses in the communities if they would like to adopt a bridge? That's a plan, and that gets us out of the bridge business again. But so far, there's no plan. So for the 125.3 miles and 302 bridges we own in this county, you're asking for another $2.8 million, 1.4 directly from us, and the other 1.4 coming to you in other tax dollars, so it's still our money. And you don't have a plan. Now, I applaud Mr. Schnee's recommendation that if the state doesn't pony up their matching amount, that it all goes away. But you know, then I got thinking back to 2014, when another councilperson, Mr. Haas, decided to get into the ordinance of the repeal of the homestead exemption, to only have it last for so many years and be reinstated in fiscal year 2018. But then magically, in 2016, ordinance 15, he all repealed that. So you're going to do the same thing to Mr. Schnee and his idea that you did to Harry? Get a plan before you come to the people and want to take more of our money that we need to keep the roofs over our houses. Get a plan. Thank you.
Mr. Petroskis? You want to come back to, yeah, okay. We'll go through, and then I'll certainly ask, and you can have an opportunity, sir. Mr. Urban?
Once again, I'm just asking council to vote no on this particular ordinance. It's nice that county manager showed up for this now.
Mr. Steve.
How are you doing, Mr. Pedry? And really, I think, you know, this is his idea, and once again, putting you guys on the hook for the vote. But really, how many people are also that are employed by the county in the road and bridge department are actually qualified to run some of the equipment or the heavy operating equipment to actually repair some of these bridges and roads? You know, if you have to operate a crane, you need some state and probably federal certifications. Do we have employees at the county that are certified to run such equipment? 302 bridges, I mean, $2.8 million isn't really going to last long. You'd be lucky, you know, the Division Street Bridge is going to cost $2 million. You're looking at maybe one or two bridges for that money, and you still have about 300 left over to do. I mean, overall, to fix every road and every bridge in this county would probably cost you half a billion dollars. And we definitely don't have that type of money. But to keep nickel-and-dimey people in a regressive way just chases people out of this area. I mean, last week, I happened to be in New Jersey. Their roads are perfectly smooth. So, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Ola stating that, you know, we really need to go back and look at the application, how we're putting pavement down, because our roads are crappy. As soon as you go over the border in Pennsylvania, they're terrible. But as soon as you go over the New Jersey side, they're smooth, smooth as glass. And even their little towns are, the roads are nice. You know, so I, it's really down to the principle of this $5. You know, if you want to keep taking from the people, all you do is you really make them angry. You're making them work harder for the, for, in their lives, and then, like I said, you know, everything spirals into additional problems and other variables in life. The more you take from people, the more you're making them work, the more you anger them, the more they may create social ills out in society because they can't afford to live. You're not giving them any hope. They'll spiral into selling drugs, and it really gets into other areas when you start taking away from the people. You know, I hope you all have a conscience and vote no on this ordinance.
Mr. Ola?
I guess we'll just keep on hammering this point until it sinks in. Instead of just sticking with, as we always do, one proposal, no alternatives, let's look at alternatives, as Steve just mentioned. You know, road conditions are intentional. Until we address that, we shouldn't be taking any money, because it's called putting bad money after good, or good money after bad, depending on how you look at things. Because if we keep on doing the same thing, the same way, we're going to have more of the same. Do you remember the definition of insanity is? Expecting a different result. It just doesn't happen, not on this planet under gravity. So we've got to throw it back in PennDOT's face, and as Steve said, we've got 76 fiefdoms here, oh, 72 in a couple cities. And collectively, we don't have enough civil engineering talent to do things right. As an example, if we think out of the box, God forbid we ever do that, and look at successful areas in much worse climate than ours, small bridges, what is New Hampshire, New York, and Maine doing? You know what they're doing with their bridges? They're building them out of wood, out of kits, like Lincoln Logs. Remember those? What those little engineered little kits we used to get when we were five years old, complete with an engineer's hat? And here we are, doing concrete without anything that prevents salt, doing steel that rusts and hasn't been inspected, and applications where I don't know where they went to school. So let's stop kidding ourselves. Throwing good money after bad is not the solution. We've got to start doing things a little different, and I suggest, again, that we look at an alternative form. If we really have a plan and decide to do something smartly, that there's a better way, a more fair way of getting more funding to take care of our road problems. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Coaches.
I just want to point out that I-
No, come to the microphone, please.
I do have to go up there?
Yes, because some people can't hear.
I've got to turn a hearing. It's a joke. I like to use a common sense approach in my lifestyle, and I ride the bike up on the dike a lot. I got to tell you, the pavement on that dike is better than the road. So why don't you take the money from the flood protection that you can spend on repaving the dike and use it to repair the roads? I mean, that's a common sense approach. I know flood protection is a separate part, but the money's there, they just raised 30%. Why would you pave the dike when it don't need to be paved? That's all I got to say.
Anyone else, please? Like to address the council? Mr. Gassitis?
Relative to the exempt individuals on this $5 arrangement. It's two pages, okay? Everybody have that? Two pages of exempt people. So consequently, it looks as though, as an estimate, at $5 a plate, you're looking at $1,400,000, but your realization is going to be just slightly over $1 million, okay? Now, what is the stake reimbursal on? The $1 million that you have, because that's minus the exception, or on a total amount of registrations, including the exemptions? Does anybody have an answer?
Finish your questions, and we'll have an answer for that one.
You don't have one?
Yes, we do have one, but that-
Well, that's okay. Put it in the newspaper. I read the paper every morning, okay? We give a lot of grant money away. Oh, by the way, on this one sheet relative to the roads, it shows the industrial park in Wooksbury has eight different sections of roads. That's fairly numerous relative to one area. And if you look at all of these, there's only certain places that consistently have problems with county roads, okay? Somewhere along the line over the years, I'm not sure the maintenance has been done properly, okay? Because it shouldn't deteriorate that bad. I know it's rough in the northeast. I know about roads and potholes and everything else, all right? But I also know preventive maintenance, just as you go to a physician for preventive health care, you have the same problem with roads, okay? Giving away money, grants, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Gassitis, this is on the voting agenda.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get you later.
Okay.
All right.
The state will match dollar for dollar what is collected.
What's that?
The state will match dollar for dollar what is collected that's used for bridges. So whatever monies you collect, they will match dollar for dollar as long as it's used for bridges.
Okay.
Anyone else? Under Agenda Number One, motion to approve the minutes from the April 24th meeting. Mr. Perry, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakus? Under question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Braminski? Any in opposition? Any in opposition?
Deputy General.
For the minutes of the previous meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Any abstentions? None, her. Okay. Motion carries. Moving down to Number Two, motion to adopt a resolution approving the Greater Wicksberry Industrial Fund Cooperation Agreement for Grant Funding for Missouri-Corydon University Science Hall Expansion Project.
So, second.
Mr. Kelleher? Second by Mr. Snee. Under question? Is there's on the question, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Just to comment again, I brought it up last meeting when it was introduced at the work session. You know, I'm willing to support this. Obviously, our universities are economic generators. They help out the community. However, they enjoy tax-exempt status. I would like to see Missouri-Corydon and other institutions as well help out and contribute on some of the county costs that we have here to provide them services, 911 coverage, magisterial courts. There's other issues, road and bridge, like we've been talking about here. I would just like to accompany my vote with that caveat. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Republic.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, is this a grant?
No, it is not. There's no liability to the county. There's no monies from the county.
Oh, there's no money from the county.
That's correct.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brominski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Moving down to Number Three on the back page, motion to adopt a resolution approving the Greater Wicksberry Industrial Fund Cooperation Agreement for Grant Funding for the Eight West Market Street Redevelopment City Tower Project. We have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Under question?
Under question, is there any grant money involved in this again?
Again, this is the same type of agreement as the previous one. There's no liability to the county, no money from the county.
And why did the -- this is the Eight West Market Street, this is the highlighted there?
This is the old, one of the old bank buildings there on West Market Street.
Right, 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 yeah. I'd be to go to the city to get approval, but this is why they're coming to the county?
I don't have an answer for that, Mr. Urban.
That's the question now, why did they come to the county instead of going to the city?
The only information that Mr. Colley had provided at the last meeting was since the county as a host municipality. That's why they were coming to us for both of these and not the towns or the cities.
Well, I could understand Mr. Cory because it's southern rural area county and the county would probably be the better entity. But the other project is actually located within the city of Wicksberry. And Wicksberry Community Development Fund and Wicksberry probably could have been the conduit to the project for the chamber. I just wondered why he's coming to the county instead of going to the city.
I don't think we have a clear answer for that. Ms. Hou?
I have a question. When some of these projects come to us for approval, say with the IDA or something like that, there is a restriction, or with the, say, the hospital and higher education authority, there's a restriction on how a dollar amount that we can approve in a year? Is there any such dollar amount that is affected by this?
Doesn't, I don't believe this falls in the same category as the projects that would come through that higher education hospital authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Motion by Mr. Snee, second by Mr. Perry. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, I can't get an answer for the chamber later, not why they came down instead of the city.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Brominski?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Moving down to Number Four, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Lamar Company for the billboard that's located on River Street.
So moved.
Mr. Snee?
Second.
Ms. Wakis, second. Under question?
Well, I'd like to say --
I just generally oppose the billboards on county properties. I think billboards are nothing but an ice storm. An ice storm. In Lamar, no payments on billboards. At one time, they thought we're going to have to tax the billboards. There was an ongoing court case, but then the legislature voted very quickly after Lamar lobbied them heavy to make them non-taxable, into non-taxable structures. So, I'm just totally opposed to putting any go-kart on any county property whatsoever.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes, we're, as a member of the real estate committee, we're looking to find alternative sources of revenue for the county besides taxes. Billboards are one way to actually get money into the county instead of money going out. We've had a longstanding, I guess, handshake agreement or verbal agreement for $60 a year rent. And as the real estate committee sees it, $2,000 a year is a vast improvement. So, I urge that everyone votes yes in favor of this.
Anyone else?
As we get into this, I'm going to get, yeah, I --
You're up.
I have no knowledge as a commissioner of any handshake agreement with Lamar. I don't know who that handshake agreement was. I don't ever remember that agreement coming up on a county agenda for approval. So, I'd like that to be investigated further by the real estate committee to find out who that handshake agreement was with and when it took place, and how long Lamar's been paying at $60, and where the money was going.
Anyone else on the question? We have a motion by Mr. Snee, second by Ms. Wakis to adopt the resolution. Roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Now, I have to go work right now.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Brominski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
10 to 1.
10 to 1. Motion carries. Going down to Number Five, motion to adopt the ordinance of the Luzern County for the implementation of the fee for local use provided in the state legislature, allowing the county impose a county fee of $5 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within its boundaries. We have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry?
On a motion, I'd like to make an amendment. Would a sunset provision?
Mr. Snee makes an amendment for a sunset provision. The sunset provision provides for --
Um.
The solicitor will offer information there.
And during the last meeting when this was discussed, Mr. Snee had asked that the proposed amendment be drafted. So, it is, the proposed amendment is in writing in front of everybody. But what the sunset provision holds is that should PennDOT terminate its initiative of the dollar-for-dollar match, that the county's participation in the collection of the local use fee program shall be automatically repealed without any further action from council necessary.
That's the amendment. Mr. Snee makes that amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher? Question on the amendment?
Question, PennDOT already said that they're not going to do it past one year.
I believe PennDOT, when they were here, said they would guarantee it for one year.
Well, they're going to guarantee it for one year, so they're not going to, they're not telling us they're going to do it past that. So, what's the purpose of the amendment?
Purpose of the amendment is if they do not continue with the initiative to offer that match, this would rescind this motion as this ordinance. That's the purpose. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, vote on the amendment.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, on the amendment.
Mr. Vog?
Yeah.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Brominski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, the ordinance has now been amended. We go back to the ordinance, we had a motion, Mr. Kelleher, and second by Mr. Perry, to adopt the ordinance. Motion, amendment.
Same motion to adopt the amended ordinance.
So, this solicitor reminds me of the same motion to update, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Kelleher, you make that motion?
I do.
Mr. Perry, do you second that?
I do.
On that question now. Ms. Hou?
Well, on the question, we have a list of 125 miles of county roads. And so, I heard from a lot of people who are opposed to this. And I know that some council members said at the last meeting that they heard from people that were in favor of it because they want to see some progress on the roads. And I commend the newspapers for publishing the list and making the list available to the public so they can see exactly far, how far out in the townships they would have to go to see any improvement to any roads if this fee is implemented. They would have to actually travel to, say, a .52 mile stretch of road in Fairview Township to see their tax dollars at work or their vehicle fee at work. As far as looking at money coming back from the state, the state's going to collect the money, and then we have to wait for the state to give it to us. But it's contingent on how much of the money is paid for use with roads and bridges. So, do we also have to provide proof that it was used for roads and bridges before they reimburse it? Or would it be an automatic match that when they send us, say, in June and December, they send us how much was collected on the $5 fee, they would automatically send us double the money? Does anybody have an answer to that?
Mr. Pedri?
I actually asked that same question to PennDOT. Yes, they will reimburse us dollar for dollar for amounts only utilized on bridges.
But how will they know it's only used on bridges?
We have to sign a certification from the county management that it utilized only on bridges, and we have to provide documentation that that money was utilized on bridges.
Okay. So, in June, when they send you money, you will get twice as much money as they collect on the vehicle fees?
I don't know what the timeline is. I know that we get our money that collected from county citizens on June and December. I don't know what the timeline is to receive the PennDOT match.
Right. I don't think that it's money that's worth taxing the people for, and let's face it, it is an extra tax on the people to collect money that might or might not come from PennDOT that you would only be guaranteed for a year if that. So, I am opposed to this.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Brominski?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis? And then Mr. Urban?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have before us a list of roads, but not bridges. And I'm not sure exactly of the location of all the bridges. I do know one bridge is in Pittston. Mr. McCabe referred to it as the Water Street Bridge. The bridge needs work, as Mr. McCabe has appeared before us at least twice and made, I think, a very effective case for some repair, restoration, at least of the holes, the potholes, and certainly the lights, and who knows what else? Now, I'm not sure about Division Street. I don't know if that's one of our bridges or not. We had people, it is?
It is.
We had people before us several times asking for us to please do something about that. That's not in outlawing areas. That's in, within what I call the core of the Wyoming Valley. And once again, just because, you know, the roads, the majority of roads are in outlawing areas, people need decent roads and bridges. And as I've said, I think this is the third time, not everyone lives in Wicksberry, Kingston, Swarfield, Forty-Fort. People live all over in Luzern County, and I think it's our duty, if we own the road or if we own the bridge, to do whatever we can to maintain the road or bridge and certainly bring it up to drivable condition.
Mr. Brominski?
Yeah. I would presume that we have been doing that right along to maintain our roads and bridges, but obviously, we haven't. And I'm going to maybe bounce around a little here, but I'm looking at this non-exempt list of vehicles. It says recreational vehicles, campers, motorhomes, and trailers aren't going to have to pay it. Well, you know, you have SUV, you're driving a SUV, it's a sports utility vehicle, but is that a recreational vehicle? Sure, sometimes it is. They go mudding wood and so forth. Are they going to have to pay? Who decides? Campers are not going to have to pay this. The campers are going over the roads, they're creating as much problem as anything else they're probably having. Motorhomes, not paying a $5 fee when you have a motorhome and you're traveling over the road, you're going to exempt them? Or trailers? You're going --
How big?
Now, in the county, I think we have 4,000-plus roads. And I saw in the paper where it stated that there are 600 approximately miles, 4,000 miles. 600 miles are state roads, and 125 are county roads. So, that means there's 700 and 25 miles of county roads in Luzern County, and that means 3,300 miles of road is state. It's state. Now, I know we don't have any in Sawyer, so I'm not sure about how many you have in Wicksberry, Kingston, Forty-Fort, Dupont, Duryea, Harvey's Lake, Hazleton. There are roads around, but I don't believe there are enough roads around that would say or would convince me that I should contribute $5 to take care of those roads. If we hadn't taken care of them right along, they may not have been in such deplorable position as they are right now. But we haven't. We haven't been taking care of them. I don't know what our road and bridge did from November until maybe February. We should have been out doing something, looking at it, grading them, setting up a plan, as was stated. We don't have a plan. We don't have a plan if what we're going to do first, we're going to get a bunch of money in, and we're going to put it there and say, okay, now what do we want to do with it? We can't do things that way. You cannot do things that way. We have to sit down and take a look at this. The $5, you know, I took a survey on my street. And on my street, well, I live in a little development, there are approximately 26 homes, and I counted the cars in that area. And in that area, there are about 42 cars in that area. Also in that area of homes, there are five that are not senior citizens. The rest of us are senior citizens. So, we're kicking in this money to be used for roads that we never went on, we probably never will go on, but yet we're asked to contribute our money. It's not only the $5, it's, as was stated, the fee went up for the shore authority, the fee went up for the levy. Everything is increasing, and we're getting pinched all the time with these $5. And I never thought I would hear it, but I did. The one friend I have, and I like to stop for a bagel in the morning with some senior citizens and leave, do a little talk, and two of them don't come on Tuesdays and Thursdays because they said it's costing them too much money. The extra $15 for a bagel and coffee that week is too much for them. They have to pull back a little bit. They can't afford it. They can't keep afford to go out at 5 mornings awake just to have a coffee and a donut. So, we're doing something wrong. We're doing something wrong when our people can't go out and enjoy the years that they have left for the years that they put in to get to where they are. Doing this right now, and by the way, I have not talked to one person, not one, who said pass it. Not one. Not one. I've hit it on Facebook, I've written to my friends, I've called friends, I've gone to various places and talked to them, and I have, is there anybody here that wants the $5 fee, please? I have not talked to one person who said, put it on there. It's only $5. Not one. But, look, the prospects are that it's going to be put on there. That certainly is not speaking on behalf of the people. The majority of the people are saying, no. They're saying, no, we don't want this $5 fee. What kind of confidence are we giving these people by just ignoring, because they didn't come to me personally and say what they want, and we're going to ignore that person and go ahead and do it? We did that before with another one. We had an overwhelming negative response to junk cars. And one person came in and opposed it. And we voted it down because one person didn't want junk cars. And we had in the audience about 15 people who didn't want it. We're not doing what the people want. And I'm a, I taught history and sometimes I remember some of the things. But I remember that Abraham Lincoln says the objective of government is to do for people what they can do for themselves. And we have to fix these roads. But we're not fixing them if we're going to the people all the time for the money. We have to start to learn to tighten our belts and to work with what we have. This is not going to be an instantaneous fix. And by the same token, we shouldn't have been at this point right now. We should have been working on these issues as we're going along. But we're saying we don't have $2 million to work on that bridge. Okay, well, maybe we got $200,000. Let's fix that culvert over there. Some of the areas of road that we're talking about are an eighth of a mile, a sixteenth of a mile. We couldn't fix a sixteenth of a mile? We're not going to go through and fix the whole 25, 125 miles of road at one time or all of those bridges. As was said, it'll take a lifetime to get that done. But get it started. And that 1.4 extra isn't going to do it for us. It isn't going to do it for us. We're going to have to tighten our belts and get things going there. Let's start looking at it from a management point. Say, let's manage it differently. We haven't tried anything different except raising taxes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, I have a couple of points to go on. Number one, several weeks ago, we received the financial chart, show money in different accounts in the county. If you look at that financial chart from two weeks ago, there was $2.3 million in the Act 13 bridge account. That's money that came in from our sale funding that was set aside for bridges. None of that money's been spent to date. So one of my colleagues said that the people just want to see something done. But the reality is that money's been coming in for four years now and nothing's been done with that money. It's been stockpiled in an account and hasn't been used. That's open to the public. Anybody can look at that account. It was provided to us at our last meeting. Number two, I looked at the legislation pertaining to this particular funding. That money doesn't have to only be used on bridges. It can be used to cut brush along ways, to improve site clearance, to go out and spray. In my opinion, that money can take place of any road and bridge money that is going into the general fund, into the account and used for that purpose. I heard Mr. Pedry say that PennDOT is only going to match us a dollar-for-dollar money spent on bridges. Well, the money doesn't have to be spent on bridges according to the law that the legislature passed. It can be used for a lot of different things. And I urge all of my colleagues to look at that and see that it's just not set aside for bridges as we've been discussing. The other thing is, is that these bridges are out in rural communities. And I think we've learned, we all have learned that the rural townships receive a 40% plus up in their funding. If you go out to the rural townships and you look at the millage, the millage in these rural townships is very low compared to what it is in the cities. And the people out there are not paying a lot of taxes to their local government entities. And I don't know why. I really don't know why the rural township, the government officials in the townships don't want to take these bridges and roads and put them under their jurisdiction. They're in their towns. You know, it's been proven time and time again that they'll get more money from the state if they own the road or they own the bridge than the county does. You know, I think it's about time that we start looking out after our budgets and after the people in general throughout the county and that the local municipalities take on their responsibility. And I think part of their responsibility is safety of their roads and their communities and safety of their bridges. The other comment I want to make is that I don't know of any of these bridges that we're talking about that are totally unsafe, that have been shut down. I know in some cases over the years, they reduce the weight limits on bridges, you know, puts postings up. But the bridges are still passable and are still in use. So I don't think any of them are in danger of falling into the crick. And then the last comment I want to make is, you know, the Solomon's Creek Bridge fell in the crick as a result of a flood event. You know, there was no reimbursement that was received, as far as I know from the state. That bridge is supposed to be owned half, was owned by the county, half owned by the city of Wilkes-Barre. So I think an agreement starts to come in play on that bridge. And who's going to fund it and how is it going to be funded? Whether it's going to be funded through the TIF or it's going to be funded through a different mechanism. But I don't think a $5 fee is a proper approach right now since we're already sitting on over $2 million in the Act 13 account for bridges that has not been used. So I'm not going to vote for this particular fee.
Anyone else? Mr. Haas?
Yeah. I mean, this is a great discussion. I love the folks in the crowd and the folks here on council discussing this. And, I mean, Steve brings up a good point. You know, we'll let the townships or the municipalities handle their own roads and bridges. But clearly, it's an albatross. Nobody wants those roads and bridges. It's a tremendous expense, even with a higher state funding mechanism. I got to applaud the manager too, Dave, for you and Ed O'Neill and the department for trying to unload some of these roads. We've been successful a couple down in Butler Township, I believe. But again, it's just like the state police. If you're getting state police coverage, why would you spend more money in your budget to get local police coverage? That's a state issue and between the municipality is. But again, every township is unique in that aspect, too. I also appreciate manager for sending us the map of all the roads and bridges in Luzerne County and our GIS and Ed O'Neill's office, too. Thank you for that. I wish it were a little more detailed. And I would still encourage you, Mr. Manager, to maybe have at the state of the county address, really communicate to the people, here's the roads and bridges that we're looking at, here's what's next up in the cycle. Really communicate where just the general money is going. And we talked about that last time. I wish I could have the same confidence in the state, however, because when we look at these promises the state gives us, you know, we go back to the casino revenue. That was going to be used for 100% property tax rebates. Nothing happened. And people got a very small pittance of a check. And that was many years ago. I look, a gentleman talked about the Turnpike. That is a slush fund. It's used in many other things. It's not used for the Turnpike in large amounts. And where is our money going? This happens time and time and time again with the state, most recently gasoline tax. Again, that was promised to help out roads and bridges. A lot of that goes to state police, goes for public transit, which most of that goes to Philly. We do benefit the LCTA. I acknowledge that. But again, the vast majority of that goes out of Luzerne County. So we come to this, and I really put a lot on to it. And if the state just gave us $2 million, we'd gladly take it. But we have strings attached. And I would say, encourage my colleagues in the council, if you want to support this, why can't we just homestead back $5 when millage back to the people? The county will absorb it. We can have it in our budget. Give the people back the $5 and we still gain that amount of money, how much we levy. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment myself. I'd like to call it Section 4A, right after the sunset provision. I'm sorry, right before the sunset. If we could implement a homestead reduction of the millage amount equivalent to $5 for the 2019 fiscal budget. Therefore, it's the county paying for it and not the people. Because I agree with so many people out there. People are just tired of being nickel-and-dimed here and there. Things are always going up. And it seems like there's always something new. So I would ask the colleagues-
Homestead reduction, what was the number?
Yeah, I'll read again. If we could implement a homestead reduction of the millage amount equivalent to $5-
Equivalent to $5?
For the 2019 fiscal budget. I know it would be like a couple thousands of a mill or whatever that means. But it moves us, again, in the right direction, away from relying so much on property tax. And I brought up last, I know a lot of people weren't here, the House Bill 76, that a lot of people are very passionate about in Luzerne County and the Northeast. You know, that was a way to wean us off the property tax. I see this as potentially a way to do the same at the local level.
Okay. I have a second to Mr. Haas's amendment.
I'll second it, but I have a question, too.
We have a second. On the question.
Yeah. Is that not then a budget amendment? That would be subject to a second here, to its own public hearing?
And that's kind of what I was thinking, too, or whether or not it had to be its own separate ordinance in general, since it's a different topic.
Mr. Haas?
I mean, can we take, can we vote on it at this point? And for right now?
I think we can vote on it if it's a budget amendment because we have to follow the process for the ordinance amendment.
Hey, I appreciate Linda's comment. It would be for the 2019 budget because I'm guessing this won't be levied for another 90 days according to the state statute, right?
That's correct.
So it already puts us, if council decides, into the late summer. And therefore, we can reimburse the people next year that start to pay that.
So you can make that amendment when we do the 2019 budget. Correct?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can actually make the amendment anytime you want. I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be attached to the statute if it's due for 2019 or for next meeting or something along those lines. It would be a separate amendment on the budget. It would be my understanding of the rules. But I'll leave it up to the solicitor.
So based on the solicitor's opinion, this would not be?
I mean, I think it should be a separate ordinance. And of course, it can be proposed at any time.
Okay.
I mean, if it's, Mr. Haas wants it on the next work session, I could draft it and have it on the next work session. But Ms. Howe is right then. We, you know, have to account for it. If we're talking, for example, the December funds that come in into the account for the revenue coming in in 2018 and then the homestead, what portion would be in 2019?
Mr. Haas?
Yep. So I'll rescind my amendment in that case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Mr. Sedman first and then?
I appreciate everybody here tonight and all the statements against the $5 fee. I had a little bit different situation than you, Mr. Brabinski. I, actually, Mr. Pedry, Mr. McInley and I presented the $5 fee situation to a group of people about six weeks ago. And at the end of the meeting, which was composed of all men and all senior citizens, said, do you think you can make it $10? And we said, no, no, we have enough problems with $5. I have talked to neighbors, myself, and I have talked to people in the market, you know, just anybody that I get into a conversation with. And it has not been as negative as many of the people are stating. I think that, I mean, for me, it looks like you're given $5 and if I gave you $5 and, you know, you paid me back with 10. And that's how I'm looking at it, at least. It cannot go beyond this year. We've already put that amendment in. Some people have said, and some of the emails I got said, of course, it's going to continue. You know, you're going to raise it next year. You're going to do this next year. Well, with Mr. Snee's amendment, that's not possible. I think that, oh, I mean, you can, I guess, you know, make- on the amendment that we're voting on, the sunset provision is there. And-
That provision simply says that if the state backs out-
Excuse me, let Mr. Sedman finish her conversation and then-
Yes, but what I'm saying, if the state backs out, we will stop the $5 collection.
But if the state doesn't back out, we can raise it to 10.
Well, only if the state did that. But I don't think that amendment says that. I mean-
The law doesn't allow it.
So, I know I have personally been ridiculed along with other people. I've seen my name put up on signs and raising people's taxes because they own four cars. But they own four cars. And I do appreciate what Mr. Olaf said. I think it was Mr. Olaf. Somebody over there talked about the different types of registrations throughout the United States. And I believe that when I went and looked it up, Pennsylvania was one of the states that cost the least amount in terms of registering a vehicle. Many of them, many of them go by the weight of the car and by the axles. And so we do have a bargain there. I know that when I was campaigning, I was outing parts of Chicxuln area, really, really far out. I didn't even know I was in Luzerne County. And they said to me, please, please, do something with our roads. Please, please, do something with our bridges. So there are portions of this county that I think it's very important to the people. And I appreciate everything everybody's saying. But I want to listen to both sides of my constituents, both sides. The people that are saying they are against it, like you brought up, Mr. Brabinski. But the number of people that I've talked to overwhelmingly wanted it.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes. Someone asked the question or stated they didn't think any of the county bridges were currently closed. There is a bridge closed. I don't quite know if it's in Neskapeck or Wapwawup. And it may even be Bridge Road, it may even be the bridge on Bridge Road. School buses have to detour. I've heard from neighbors who live there who tell me they need to do a two-mile detour to get to work in the morning. And I also know there is a dicey bridge situation on Blythburn Road, which is a very heavily traveled road, very close to Rice Elementary School. Many school buses travel over the bridge and it's down to one lane. And so those are the two bridges I personally know of. I've gone out to look at them myself. So there may be other bridges that are closed or in very bad condition. I'm not quite sure. But I like to do my due diligence before I vote as well.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Kellher?
The state money is money that, excuse me, money that comes from us, to the state. By passing this ordinance, we'll get that back. Mr. Snee's amendment means if the state drops out, this ordinance is rescinded. I also recommend that the suggestion that was made in this room by one of the constituents, that we do as much as we can to push the idea, which you have, County Manager Pedry, that we prioritize, and this is a suggestion, so that those people who would get their roads repaired and fixed properly, that we would prioritize it in such a way that those who were willing to take those roads back so that we no longer own them, the county, that they should be put up at the top of the list. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, going back to the motion, number five. The amended motion is up for vote. Mr. Kelleher made the motion. Mr. Perry made the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven-four. Going down to number six. A motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing amendment to 2018 budget to allow for a transfer of funds from the reserve and pay for the electronic poll books. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakey? On the question.
These are, just on the question, I just want to make sure people understand, these are the electronic poll books.
That's correct.
These are not the voting machines. I thought some of the people were thinking that's who we're voting on tonight.
No, it's only for the poll books that were here on display about a month ago, six weeks ago. Any other questions?
I do. I like what Mr. Olaf had to say on that regarding the election, but I was just wondering, is this a requirement to have the poll books? Is this being required by law that we change to...
Well, Ms. Crispel's in the audience. Ms. Crispel, you want to come to the microphone, please? Did you hear the question?
I did.
Okay.
No, it is not a requirement. We have not been mandated to purchase new poll books. What we've been mandated to do is purchase new voting systems. Okay.
Any other questions?
You know what, if I couldn't, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Yeah, I know we budgeted $75,000 for this item in this year's budget. I know it's, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars extra cost. I really liked Ms. Crispel's presentation two weeks ago. She itemized the savings that we would see here. Correct me, Ms. Crispel, like $67,000 around there per year.
Correct.
We're looking for the off-year elections, for the presidential elections, we're looking at more, like about close to $90,000 or something like that.
Correct.
So I know we're looking at the reserve fund here, but I'm fully expecting for the Bureau of Elections to have a decrease in the amount of expenses for this next year because of what we see here. So I really feel this is going to pay for itself. This is one of these things, you know, we definitely at the county are responsible for fair and efficient elections. When I remember the presidential election, we had the ballot questions, there were tremendous lines. Took people sometimes hour, hour and a half to vote. This is really going to, and coming from somebody who's worked as a judge of elections before, from what I've seen, I was very impressed with the presentation with the gentleman that came here. It's going to save a lot of time and I think it's going to expedite Election Day. And like I said, over the next couple of years, I really think it's going to pay for itself.
Anybody else?
This is the purchase, right, not the lease?
Purchase. All right, Mr. Kelleher made the motion. Ms. Wakey made a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine to two, motion carries. Going down to number seven. Motion to introduce an ordinance amending the ordinance 2016-06 regarding the Blighted Property Review Committee. This is a result of the presentation made by the Blighted Property Review Committee and the efforts of Mr. Haas. And this would change that ordinance that would allow for the Redevelopment Authority to provide funding instead of the services of a solicitor and administrative services. Do we have a motion? Do we have for that?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, on the question.
Other question?
Yes.
Will we be seeing a budget amendment to put the $15,000 back in?
What we will be seeing hopefully is, and we'll be talking in the work session, as you see, it's an item there. This would be the first step, introduce the ordinance and make the change. Then we have to get a agreement between the Redevelopment Authority and the county. Once that agreement is, come back to council for a vote, then we would follow through with the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to comment and praise Mr. Haas for the excellent review last week, last meeting we had, the blighted committee, they were excellent and it's well worth doing it.
Thank you. Ms. Wakey?
I also would like to join Mr. Perry in praise. Your, that committee is excellent. And I thoroughly now understand the dilemma that your committee has been faced with after, after that very thorough review. And I also took it upon myself to drive and walk through some towns and some boroughs. And that opened my eyes as well, as far as the blighted property situation. There's pictures worth a thousand words, Mr. Haas.
Ms. Segman?
No, I was, before Ms. Wakey had commented about Mr. Haas, I was, I thought it was a great presentation by the group last, two weeks ago. Excellent. And certainly you have done a wonderful job for the county in terms of of the, of the taking a very good look at the blighted properties.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
You are very kind. I haven't taken any praises, to praise those committee members. They're really quality people and they've put a lot of hard work in over the past year and a half. And again, just, just to reiterate, and we've talked about it quite a bit, this is not cost-county tax dollars. This is something we can do to come alongside our townships and boroughs and really help them solve the problems plaguing a lot of folks out there. So thank you all for your consideration. Really appreciate the kind words on behalf of the committee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. We need four votes to make the introduction. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten to one, motion carries. Going down to number eight, we need a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy in Luzerne County Children Advisory Board.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Yes.
Segman? On the question? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Now we're moving down to number nine, Boards and Commissions, nominations and appointments, too.
Can I make a comment, please?
Mr. Kelleher, do you want to...
We had a meeting last night of the ABCS committee. We weren't sure if we were going to have a meeting because I'm sure everybody saw some stuff on TV and heard stuff on radio yesterday. I even called one of the gentlemen who normally attends. He's our audience of one. And he did not attend because he thought there was no meeting because of the problem with the courthouse. We had a wonderful meeting, wonderful people came, and the first nomination, I don't know if I'm out of order. The ACE Commission, we have a Democrat who's willing to serve. And I'd like to make sure, I know what the procedure is. Do we have to declare an opening?
We have to, no, we have to open up nominations.
Okay, well if you...
Do you want to do that, Mr. Chair?
I'll do that.
Mr. Kelleher opens up the nominations. Do we have a second today? Mr. Snee, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And now we're on the ACE Commission and we do need one Democrat as Mr. Kelleher has indicated. Mr. Kelleher, you want to make a nomination?
I do. Karen Metta.
Do we have a second to that?
Yes.
Ms. Segman? On the question? Roll call, please.
For the ordinance or for the resolution to appoint?
Resolution to appoint.
Will we close nominations?
Yep. Oh, excuse me, you're right. Close nominations. Do we have a motion for that, Mr. Kelleher?
Well, I think she made it.
Mr. Brabinski did.
Mr. Brabinski, you want to make that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Brabinski makes a motion to close it. Ms. Howe committed a motion to second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Kelleher, you want to make a motion, resolution to appoint Ms. Metta?
I do. I so, I move that we appoint Karen Metta to the ACE Commission.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Segman? On the question? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous, so we now have a full committee for the ACE Commission. Aging was, was going to be part of the nominations and procedure tonight, but we do not have any eligible candidates. Correct, Mr. Kelleher? So we'll skip down to children and youth. Motion to open nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakey? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have a nomination?
Francis Scarnulus.
Francis Scarnulus. Mr. Snee, do we have a second for Mr. Scarnulus? Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Do we have any other nominations?
We do. Tonight, we just got informed that one of the people interviewed is willing to serve on children and youth. Is that correct, Chair? I'd like to nominate John Bonnen.
John Bonnen. Mr. Kelleher makes that nomination. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perry?
Sorry, what was that nomination?
John Bonnen, children and youth.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Segman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Do we have a motion to have a resolution to appoint Mr. Scarnulus to the children and youth?
So moved. Nobody have his name or the other names?
Mr. Snee makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
I'll second.
Well, Ms. Wakey did, Mr. Urban. Do we have, do we have a motion to appoint by resolution Mr. John Bonnen to the children and youth committee?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Segman? Roll call vote for Mr. Scarnulus.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous, we have a motion to appoint Mr. John Bonnen. Mr. Kelleher and Mr. Perry, you second that? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brabinski?
We're voting for two people.
If you already voted for one, this would be the second candidate.
I'm voting for two until... Yes. Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous. Going down to D, the Convention Center. We have a motion to open up nominations.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Snee seconds it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Nominations are now open?
I'd like to nominate Joseph Carter. Second.
Joseph Carter, Mr. Kelleher and then Mr. Snee had the second. Any other nominations for the Convention Center?
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Haas, motion closed. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to appoint by resolution Mr. Joseph Carter to the Convention Center. Mr. Kelleher makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous, going down to letter E, Luzerne County Recreation Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion to open up nominations?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snee, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a nomination?
Would you like to nominate Neil Cofford?
Neil Cofford? Ms. Howe, do we have a second? Ms. Segman? Any other nominations?
Motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Motion to close. Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakey, okay? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, we have a motion to appoint by resolution to the Luzerne County Recreation Facilities Committee. Mr. Neil Cofford, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Ms. Howe?
Second.
Second. Mr. Snee? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Segman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakey?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten to one, motion carries. Public comment?
Mr. Steve Urban. Just wanted to mention, just thank you for the majority for a disgraceful performance again on taxing the people of Luzerne County. Some of you may be able to afford it. Most of you have worked in the public sector most of your lives, paid for by us that work in the private sector. Just want to thank you for charging us another $5. You know, I hope the people remember this when you guys are up for reelection next time around. It's really a disgrace that you have to basically take $5 of our hard-earned money just to get another $5 back from the state. You know, if you did your job and you went back to your state representatives, your state senators, and you told them, "Hey, we want this money," without any strings, they should change the law. I'm sure many of you are connected to these individuals, speak to them, you know. All these exemptions in here, a lot of it's heavy equipment. Trailers, trucks, tractor trailers. My car's really not putting the pothole in the road. It's really the plow that's going down the street by the municipality. And then, you know, obviously, we flattened two tires, or I flattened two, actually this year in Wilkes-Barre. That wasn't a state road. That was actually a city road. As much as I would have liked to thrown my two wheels through city hall's doors, I, you know, can't do that. But, you know, they're the ones that caused the damage. You would think that they, you know, after they run over the roads with the plow, that they would go and simply just put something on top of it so other people don't suffer the same, you know, demise. But really, you know, I know personally, I don't go out in the country. I don't know who, you may have spoke to, Mrs. Segman. who, you may have spoke to, Mrs. Sageman, but I don't think anybody that I spoke to, you know, really wanted that $5 implemented. Maybe you have a lot of rich friends, that's fine, but many of the, public is not rich, many people are on fixed incomes, and it's a real, real shame that you've got to tax the seniors and the hard-working people once again within this county.
Mr. Matroskis? Mr. Shiner?
Well, I'd just like to say I'm not going to stand for this, that's mainly because there's no podium. I can appreciate Ms. Wakis and your comments saying that not everyone lives in Wilkes-Barre and Kingston and so on. I fully understand the concept of county government, what it needs to do for all the residents in the county. So I hope that all of you who voted in favor of this $5 fee will also give very good, hard consideration and vote in favor of returning the $1.2 million from the general fund to the care of our flood levy system. Because that would make a drastic decrease on what we, the people along the levy, have to pay each year. I believe the general expense for the levy is about $1.8 million per year in revenue they take in, so the $1.2 that was originally in the county budget would go a long way in reducing what we have to pay for that. So if we're going to go back to the principle of county government in taking care of the people in the county, then let's stop doing it for certain people only. Let's do it for everybody, the way it was intended to be. The Blighted Property Review Committee, I think it's a great idea. I'm totally in support of it, but I don't agree with the funding principle. The Redevelopment Authority is supposed to handle the redevelopment by their mission statement from the state, even though they changed theirs and removed blight from it. The state says their goal is supposed to be to handle the blight in the county. They've point-blank said that even after the certification from the Blight Property Committee, they may do absolutely nothing. They may just let the blighted property sit there. Now, they've been quoted as saying that they have insufficient administrative and legal staffing to do this job, and that's why they want to just give $15,000 over the course of the year and let the county handle the administration and the legal, as opposed to what the original ordinance said. But isn't it funny that they have plenty of administrative and legal staffing to handle a TIF, and they're willing to take on another one? Well, they don't get paid for that until down the road, but they have the money to handle that, but they don't have the money to handle the legal and the administrative for the blight, what they're supposed to be doing for this county. The main problem is, they can't get the money they should get because it needs to come from the Office of Community Development. That's the main problem. They can get it, it can be had, but some changes have to be made, and I think those changes should be made to allow that money to flow from them to the Redevelopment Authority as it's intended, and then handle this blighted property review. I'd also, since everyone's giving kudos to everyone, I'd like to thank all the residents of this county, especially those who encouraged you to vote no on this $5 fee. It's about time the residents of this county start coming forward and standing up for what they want, and I wholly encourage them to continue to do so, and I will be asking for their support in the very near future to do exactly that. Thank you.
Mr. Olaf?
Just another dead horse, that's all it is. I'm embarrassed, in a way, that a few of you people sold the $5 tax idea to residents of the county that did not know that this incremental revenue was only going to go with not only strings, but limited applications to at most 125 miles, with no guarantee that Pennsylvania and Harrisburg would ever give you a cent. Think about it. Everybody's upset about our, our reputation for the poorest roads in the United States in this county. But they didn't realize, so we all know why some residents said yes, were in favor of it, because they assumed blindly that the roads that are breaking up their cars are going to be fixed, nothing probably further from the truth, except for a small handful of individuals living in the outback. It's just embarrassing, but that's okay. We do the same thing. So accordingly, I have a recommendation, and I know nobody here currently on council, certainly not the administration, has the courage, fortitude, whatever even word you really want to use, to shorten this meetings, these meetings by about maybe 50%, by floating a proposal that we eliminate voting in the voting sessions. Let's be honest, we know plus or minus one how every vote in the next couple of years are going to go. The people know it. You hear it in the media all the time. Unless you're deaf and blind, you know it too. We know that every vote here is going to be 7483, or higher. No exceptions, we know what's going on, you know what's going on, and we know why, and we know how. So why are we going through these motions? The silliness. Let's be honest, say, look, anything that gets brought up is going to go and be passed. How about voice vote? Everybody say aye up. Just like Real Town meetings. Or not even bring it up. Somebody brings up an idea, go for it. Especially if it has to do with spending money. Last but not least, was I asleep, or did somebody hit me on the head, or did we somehow